So, a bittersweet moment at the top of the agenda. This is one of the last meetings of our year. And two of our commissioners, Commissioner Sean Farhi and Commissioner Anna Marie Jones, are leaving the board. We have elected two new members to join us in January. And we'd like to give you both a send-off. We've got some plaques if you'll join me up front. But I'll say just a couple of words about both of these really dedicated and committed public servants. So Sean Farhi has been on the board since 2018, five and a half years of service with passion and commitment and a real energy for the Ward Seven that he represents. So, thank you for your service, sir. And Anna Marie Jones joined us this past term, filling in a ward that is sort of central to our township in South Wayne. And I would also like to thank you, Commissioner Jones. Again, your passion and engagement and your involvement with the community has been really wonderful to watch, and I appreciate everything that you have done over the last two years. So, thank you for serving in this seat. And if the two of you would join me and the manager up front, we'd like to honor you So, I will read off the plaque. This is for Anna Marie Jones. In recognition of your dedicated service to the Radnor Township community by serving on the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners, please know the citizens, commissioners, and staff of Radnor Township sincerely appreciate and thank you for your outstanding service and lasting contribution to help make Radnor Township the best place to live, work, play, and do business on the main line. Congratulations, Anna Marie. Thank you for your service.
There you go. Thank you.
I'll just say, I'm feeling just as overwhelmed right now as I did the first day. But the first day was a feeling of nervousness and not knowing what to expect. But today, it's more just, I'm in awe of everyone that I've worked with and served with, and it's just been a real eye-opening and rewarding thing to do. And I highly encourage anyone who's interested in public service to give it a shot, to run, to get to know what goes on behind the scenes of what makes a township so wonderful as Radnor. So, thank you.
This might sound familiar, but Township recognizes you, Sean Farhi, in recognition for your dedicated service to the Radnor Township community by serving on the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners. Please know the citizens, commissioners, and staff of Radnor Township sincerely appreciate and thank you for your outstanding service and lasting contributions to help make Radnor Township the best place to live, work, play, and do business on the main line. Sincerely, thank you for your service, Sean.
So, just a few words. They say it takes a village, it takes a tremendous staff. So, to the staff, you guys are amazing. I couldn't have done it without you guys. And I really should say, "We" couldn't have done it, because I live at a fantastic place in Garrett Hill, Ward Seven. It's this tight-knit community. And I actually got appointed in 2017. So, actually, it was today, the 11th. So technically, it's seven years today. So again, it's bittersweet, but yeah, it's been a while, and it's time. So, I'm happy. I'm happy for the ward, I'm happy for the new commissioner, and I'm always here if anyone needs me. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, again, thank you to the two outgoing commissioners. And our next item is, this is a comprehensive plan community reminder. I'm going to turn it over to the screen where you will see a short video about the comprehensive plan and the process that we are undergoing currently this year. Soon as we've got our man with the power button. And as he's setting that up, I hope that all of you will participate in as many ways as you can. You'll learn a few ways to engage with this process by watching this video.
Hi there, Radnor. I'm Bill White, Township Manager. I'm coming to you today to talk a little bit about our comprehensive plan project. This has been going on for a couple of months now. For those that aren't familiar, the comprehensive plan is an important document that the township uses to set priorities and goals for the next 10 years. We're covering areas like environmental and natural spaces, park and recreation, business and economic development, housing, density, transportation, so our streets, sidewalks, and those types of things. And what we need is to make sure that the community's voice is heard. We have a dedicated website set up, radnor2035.com, and on that website is a brief survey that we're asking all of our Radnor residents to please participate in. We have a number of folks that have already done it. For those folks, thank you very much. But we need to hear from more of the community. So, please, go to the website, access the survey. It takes just a couple of minutes, and we want to make sure that your voices are included in this public outreach portion of the project, because this is what's going to end up setting the priorities when the Board of Commissioners start talking about this in more detail come 2024. So please, jump onto the website, find the survey, take a couple of minutes, and let your voices be heard. Thank you.
Well done. Well done, Manager White. Thank you for taking the time to create that video. And again, I encourage everybody, there are lots of different ways to access this survey. This QR code is on some signs around here, but you can also go directly to the website, and we would love to get your input. So, thank you for that. And with that, I will make note that we did not meet in executive session, so I will start with public participation. Anybody who would like to make public comment tonight at the opening of the meeting, you please come to the mic. Radnor residents, for five minutes, you can speak on any topic of interest. There are other opportunities for public comment throughout the agenda. If we're voting on an item, we offer the opportunity to comment on that item at the time, but I open it now. Okay, I'm seeing none. We will go to the consent agenda. Again, another opportunity for public comment if there's anything on that portion of the agenda, 2A through F, that the public would like to speak to. You are welcome to come up at this time. Is there any item on the consent agenda that a commissioner would like to pull? I'm going to start with Mr. White. There's something that I think you want to adjust?
Yeah. Item C, the grant application, we're asking be removed from the agenda tonight. The fine print of the grant application was different than what we initially thought. So, it's not, this particular grant's not advantageous. The one that the board approved at the last meeting is still full steam ahead. This was separate. But it's not a 50-50 match. Each vehicle was capped at $7,500. So, it actually would have cost us quite a bit more to get $300,000 worth of grant money for those vehicles. We don't have that many vehicles in our fleet, for that matter. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, we've removed item C. Are there any other items that a commissioner would like to take off to discuss?
I would like F.
F? Okay. Other commissioners? Then we will move to F. This is Resolution 2023-128, entering into an employment agreement with William White as Township Manager. You want to pose a question, Mr. Farhi?
No. I just think that it's always in the, for transparency and for Bill's sake and everybody's sake, that we do take a contract and an appointment that large off the agenda. The concerns that I have is, and I don't think it really applies, I just want to make sure that it's a four-year contract, so it would not bind another board. Am I correct in that?
No.
So, it would bind another board?
For the next four years.
For the next four years. Okay. That's one of my questions. So, you're saying it would bind, but it would not bind a board four years from now? Okay. And no, I mean, other than that, you know, Bill, I think you've done a great job. I think that you've earned it. The only other concern that I have is, well, it's got to be public. So, I just wanted, just to have that conversation for transparency, and that's fine.
Sure. And for those of you who are watching or here in the room with us online, you can see the resolution and the breakdown of the salary over the next few years. So, it is there for your viewing pleasure. Any other comments or questions? The only comment I will make is that I think Bill White is a gift to our community, and he's been very reasonable in our negotiations of his contract, and always keeps in mind how it will reflect to his staff and how his staff might view any increase in pay for the township manager. And I think that was, again, it was really easy to get to an agreement on this. So, thank you for that, Bill. And with that, I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. White. With that, if there are no other items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda by our commissioners, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda items A, B, C.
So moved.
And E. And a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Moving to the business agenda, our first item is Resolution 2023-125, a resolution of Radnor Township Delaware County, Pennsylvania, approving the acceptance of a donation for a replacement police K-9. Chief, can you talk to us about this?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. We were very excited to have a Radnor resident and families behind the badge reach out to the Radnor Police Department. As you know, our K-9 Rocky, who was handled by Jen Coco, retired after a very valuable 10 years of faithful service to us and other communities. And, you know, we have a void now where we wanted to work on that. The K-9s have been fundraised through various reasons and methods, and luckily, we don't have to do it except for every, you know, roughly 10 years, depending on their lifespan, which is not a guarantee. And we came across these awesome gentlemen who wanted to come forward and help support our bomb program here in Radnor Township. And I'll turn it over to Families Behind the Badge. And there's really a neat story besides for them just being two awesome individuals and good local citizens. They also have an amazing 501(c)(3), which we're bringing up just so the community can understand a little bit more.
Hi, my name is Mark O'Connor, Families Behind the Badge founder and executive director. One of our board members, Nate Cohen, is in the back here. He's a Radnor resident, I'm Haverford Township resident. Families Behind the Badge has two main missions. Number one, we support the families of fallen, critically injured first responders in the greater Philadelphia and South Jersey area, both financially and with emotional support after a tragedy occurs. Secondarily, we have a program called Police Youth Alliance where we connect cops and kids in non-enforcement positive actions to change the perception that the kids might have of the police. And that's probably never in my lifetime been more needed than it is now, even in places like Radnor and Haverford Township. So, most important, we raised this money from a bike ride, the Bend-to-the-Shore Bike Tour. This was the 36th annual this past July. It happens every July. First year we did it, we had about 20 riders. This past year, 2,300 riders rode, and we raised one and a quarter million dollars. All that money stays local. We've given out almost $900,000 of that money so far. We have another event the end of this week in Philadelphia, and so we're going to give out some more. But initially, we were focused on Philadelphia, and now we're more focused on the surrounding counties. Our largest team is from Montgomery County. Our second-largest team is from Delaware County, the DA's office in Delaware County, and they're coming like a freight train, and they say they're going to pass Monco this year. But we like to work with them and help them. And this was an opportunity we saw that Nate brought to the rest of the board. And so, we're very happy to give a $10,000 donation for this new K-9 dog from Families Behind the Badge Children's Foundation.
Thank you very much. It's a wonderful organization, and we are thrilled to be a recipient, especially for our K-9s.
Thanks.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Questions, comments from commissioners?
I'll take a chat.
And if anybody's a bike rider, if anybody's a bike rider, July 21st this coming year, you can join the Delaware, the Delco 476ers is the name of the Delco team. So, we'd love to see you in Atlantic City at the finish. Thank you.
And commissioners, just to let you know, approximately six Radnor officers participated
on the Delaware County team this year, and it is really a blast. And even the arrival in Atlantic City, they really kind of make a hero's welcome under their expertise. So, it's a great day for families as well. So, I do want to thank them on that level.
So, with that, we will have to vote to accept it, even though I've taken the check. I feel pretty good that I know what the vote's going to be, but I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, thank you for your generosity. Moving to Resolution 2023-127, this is awarding additional work on the tree maintenance pilot program to Executive Tree Care for vine cutting at the Willows Park, Radnor Trail, and Harford Park in the amount of $9,300. Hi, Mr. Foster, is this you?
Yes, this is me, Madam President. Thank you. We have Seth Ariza here from the Shade Tree Commission, but before I turn it over to him to talk about the work that Shade Tree Commission is proposing, we had the same company, Executive Tree Care, after being approved by the Shade Tree Commission and also the Board of Commissioners, to do some tree maintenance under the pilot program where it involved pruning, divining, and also removing dead trees. The job that that company did was satisfactory, and they also gave us the cheapest bid out of the companies that we received quotes from. So now, after going before the Shade Tree Commission, they had other projects that they wanted to take on, other parks. So, he's here before you now to talk about those projects and go into detail with any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. I'll be quick. So, some of you might have seen, we've done a great program at Warren Philippone Park this past fall where we planted 53 trees, and right before we planted the trees, we had Executive Tree Care do a maintenance pilot, so we divined, brushed, cleared. So, it was a great project. It helps with upstream riparian buffer planting to soak up as much water as we can, help with erosion, and everything else. So, the goal with this pilot this year was to use Warren Philippone as kind of our guinea pig. It was a great success, and we want to wrap up a couple of more parks before the year's closed, if we can get them on the books. So, the Willows would be down near Abrams Run, which is near the exit of the Willows. The Radnor Trail near Radnor Chester Road, where we planted a few new trees a few years ago. They're needing some love to make sure that they thrive. And then also, at Harford Park, where we've been planting a lot of trails near the, a lot of trees near the trail. So, this is just to continue that program. We hope to do it next year as well. Any questions?
Questions? No, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Excellent. Thanks for the great work already. So, I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Is there public comment on this? Would anybody like to speak to that? Okay, I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This moves us to item C, which is caucus preliminary final land development plan for Eastern University Workman Hall.
So, Madam President, Eastern University is here tonight. They received Planning Commission recommendation of approval last Monday. They are here for caucus, so it's presentation, no action required by the board, and they are asking for preliminary final.
Evening. Nick Camelia representing the applicant, Eastern University. As Steve mentioned, this is a land development application by Eastern. It's basically an addition and renovation of existing building on campus, Workman Hall. Workman Hall is located on Eagle Road, it's across the street from, on Eagle from.
Yeah, can you get a little closer to the mic? It's hard to hear.
Sure. This is an addition and renovation to Workman Hall, which you can see by on the screen, that it is off of Eagle Road, across from Cabrini University. It's an addition and renovation to basically improve the honors program at Workman Hall. And Dean Brian Williams would be here and basically describe the program that is being run there, the need for the addition to the building. We had to proceed through zoning approval for this, for two items, one item being parking. We did request a variance for parking, and we also requested variances and relief. There were three areas of steep slope that were caused by prior grading to the site. The zoning board unanimously granted those variances. The Planning Commission unanimously granted approval of the plan, with the two waivers also recommending approval. The two waivers being the designating utilities within 500 feet, and also the preliminary final approval at one time, rather than just separating the two. We've also received Shade Tree approval, received approval from DRB. We have, I believe, the sewer modules for the site. We did have a neighbors' meeting back in June that discussed this project, as well as other proposed projects in the future for the university. We'll have two people basically come up. Brian, if you want to come up and just describe what is going on here at Workman Hall and the need for the renovation, and then we'll have Rob Lambert go through the plan as well.
Sure. Thanks, Nick. Thanks for hosting us. I'm Dr. Brian Williams, I'm dean of the Temple and Honors College and dean of the College of Arts and Humanities at Eastern University. As Nick mentioned, the plan is to renovate a rather tired old building, built in 1910 and designed by well-known Philadelphia architects Tilden, Register, and Pepper. Right now, this building houses our music department rather inadequately, so this project will renovate this building and try to restore it somewhat to its former glory, as well as expand the backside in order to serve our current honors college. The honors college has been around since 1999, and has never had its own home, its own center. It's a program within Eastern University that brings select students into a small academic community. Our program is really built around the study of great books and great works of art in small seminars, and enhanced by relationships between faculty and students, and friendships, intentional friendships between our students. This program will bring that together into one building, enhance what we're already doing, and really enable us to develop the kind of academic mentoring relationships within a small academic community that we've never been able to do so far. So, happy to answer any questions about the program or the project itself, but that's the overview.
Are there any questions from commissioners? Staff have questions?
During COVID, my recollection was that the university put together some trailers, and there were some neighbor complaints beforehand. I didn't hear any neighbor complaints afterwards. My recollection is that there was generally speaking concerns about noise, concerns about detritus, and concerns about porta-potties. I'm trying to stretch back like three years now, so it's a little fuzzy.
That was a strange time. All of our memories are fuzzy from COVID era.
Yeah.
And while I was here during COVID, I'm probably not the best placed person to answer that question as far as neighbor complaints.
My real question is.
Yes.
To the extent that you're able to, what steps can you take to mitigate the impact of construction on the neighbors?
Sure. I can answer that question, but other folks, Rob can also answer that question. I mean, one thing I would point out here, there are no neighbors around this building whatsoever. So, it's right off Eastern Road, it's on a side of the campus where the only people around there are other Eastern University buildings and students, and across the street is Cabrini. So, there should be no neighbor impact, actually, whatsoever with this project. Is that fair?
Do you recall where in comparison the trailers went? Was that farther south and west?
Ask that question again, I'm sorry.
Do you recall where the trailers went?
Maybe the gym?
Yeah, because they were for.
They were related to athletics.
I think they were additional storage, perhaps, related to athletics.
Storage and like locker rooms.
Yes, I believe. They were not near this project whatsoever, they were on the backside of campus.
Excellent.
Great. Thanks for your question.
Other questions from commissioners?
Can you just go through the parking? Are you, the variance, do you want for parking?
Yeah, I can.
Thanks, Nick.
What occurred with the parking relief was, the township staff determined we were underparked according to code, it was an existing nonconformity. We did do a traffic study at that time, and we found out that even though according to the township's interpretation of code that we were nonconforming, that we still had 23% at peak time of the spots that were unoccupied. So approximately 250 spots were unoccupied at peak time at the university, and that was all presented to the zoning hearing board. This proposed addition, according to the township staff, would require 64 parking spaces.
Additional?
Additional. This zoning board granted the relief, saying that we didn't have to add any, considering the fact that we had all these additional parking spaces on campus.
Okay. And if that changes in the future, then your grandfather.
Well, if we start, well, if we start building, every time we come in and build something, we have to go back to the zoning hearing board.
I do have a question about the steep slopes. So, the way I heard you present it is that this is sort of retrofitting an existing building. So, how is that going to disturb the steep slopes?
Yeah, Rob can discuss it, but basically, there were three areas of steep slope that basically bordered the existing parking that you see on the site. And those steep slope areas were created, actually, by the creation of that parking. And they're very minor slopes. I believe they're being used for ramps and sidewalks, that's what it's going to be used for. And I know one of the comments in Damian's review letter was that we would comply with the ADA requirements regarding slope of ramps, which of course, we would do. But Rob can show the steep slope areas when he does his presentation.
Good evening. Rob Lambert, here on behalf of the applicant. I'm going to go through a few slides, and then I'm going to answer the questions, just to jump through here. So, this was the first slide showing exactly where it is, Eagle Road, left to right at the top of the page, King of Prussia Road on the right-hand side, top to bottom. The dark blue area is the proposed addition. The lighter blue area is the existing building. The kind of brownish areas are walkways, and gray is parking. So, there's a few renderings. So, this is from the north side, so my back would be facing Eagle Road, looking at the front courtyard of the building, just a rendering of what the front will look like. This is from the east side, so my back would be facing King of Prussia Road, and I'd be looking at the east side of the building. And then, this one might actually help with a steep slope question a little bit. As you can see in the back, it's a little bit taller because the grade falls off in the back. So, this is if my, I'm actually facing, on the other side of the building is Eagle Road, and this would be facing the back of the building toward campus. and this would be facing the back of the building toward campus. So you can see in this, this is the survey plan. So the brown is the building, the gray is the paving. There's areas of steep slope. The dark green are the very steep slope according to the code. And we actually had a permit plan for this area along the parking lot. It's a little bit different today than it was on the permit plan. The permit plan, I believe, it was early 90s. But when they were under construction, it looks like they added a few walkways and things like that that varied those slopes. The other area of slope, there's an area for mechanical equipment that has a retaining wall around it next to an adjacent building. We will be using that same mechanical area for the mechanicals of this building or for at least most of them. And there's a little area of steep slope right behind that where it was, where we're going to expand that area. And then the last area was adjacent to an existing parking area. There was a small area of steep slope where we're going to be adding a walkway. So just little, kind of little bits and pieces. I believe there's an argument that they were exempt under the ordinance from the plans, but we were going to the zoning hearing board anyway, so we asked for the relief. Next page. This is just the proposed plan, again, showing the building. Addition sitting behind, and you get the, because of that change in grade, that was the one rendering, looking back up at the building where you see it a little bit taller from the back because we're taking advantage of that grade. That's really the slides. Mr. Larkin asked about the construction. I think that the location of this building will really limit impact to any neighbors, as Brian pointed out. The construction vehicles be coming off King of Prussia Eagle. There are really no residential neighbors up in this area.
But there is an addition. You're expanding the footprint?
Correct. Correct. There's, so the dark blue area is the addition, the light blue is the existing building.
Light blue is the original. Okay, got it. Okay, other questions? Go ahead.
Is there any way, yes, no, Jim, you go.
I just wanted to hear Mr. Norsini's comments on this.
Thank you, Commissioner. So this applicant has been through all the processes at this point and a couple of times, twice, two or three times. So at this point, they did, they did receive relief from the zoning hearing board, met the other requirements. We don't, I don't have any personal objection to any concerns with the plan nor with the fact that they wish to come through as preliminary final at this point.
Sorry, just one more question. Was there any thought to environmental concerns? Maybe putting solar on the roof, geothermal? I mean, I, you guys would know more than me. The EIC would know more than me, but what steps, if any, were done or could be done?
I'd have to defer to the owner. We really focused on the site, right? There is full stormwater that we're proposing. Just to the east of where the building is, there'll be a large underground stormwater system where none exists today to be able to collect the water off of both portions of the existing building and all the proposed building to be able to control the runoff from a stormwater perspective.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. The Eastern University folks were kind enough to give me a full tour of the old building and show me the proposed site for the new addition. And it should just be a welcome addition to this sort of sad building now that needs a little facelift, shall we say.
Thank you.
We can.
I have.
You got it? Okay, good. I wanted to show where in the full campus. You have the full campus site? Just to show where this is compared to where the trailers were located.
So this is showing the overall campus. This was part of the master plan. So you can see the area that we had enlarged is the upper right-hand corner, Cabrini to the north, King of Prussia Road to the right. The area, I believe, I did not, it was not part of it, I don't know, but the existing gym building is the light blue building over here to the left. My guess is they were, they had something over. There's a parking lot closer over here, and I suspect it was probably over there. So a pretty good distance.
Any other questions from commissioners? Anything else from you, Mr. Norsini?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation. Okay, we will move on to, the next item is D. This is the appeal of November 8, 2023, Design Review Board Decision 2023-61 regarding 530 West Lancaster Avenue for Trek. Hi, welcome. Before you start, I need a process question for our solicitor. Peter, since this is.
Yes.
An appeal of a decision of another body. Is it, do I proceed as if it were a resolution where I move it and we vote on it? Or is there any special instruction on an appeal of the Design Review Board decision?
No, the ordinance really doesn't set forth procedures on how to actually hear the appeal. It does set forth procedures as undertaking the appeal, which the applicant has done. The way I would approach this is not like a resolution. I would have them present, you know, their case, why they're appealing it, why they feel, you know, arguing, supporting their appeal. Then members of, you know, commissioners can ask questions, and then you take a vote. I think that you want more presentation of information, deliberation on that information and then a vote rather than a resolution where you're doing that all upfront.
Got it. Thank you. Did that help you all too? Hopefully. So you're here to present why you are appealing the decision of the Design Review Board. Welcome.
Good evening. So I'm Marianne. I work for Trek as a project manager. And Casey is a business development manager. And we are relocating our Trek store in Wayne. So our external signage was not approved as submitted. We have a new standard when, where we have Trek and a tagline which says Bike Services and Gear, which kind of explained the purpose of our business. And this tagline was not approved, so we have, we are here to discuss about that. We, sorry, we didn't bring like, you know, a presentation.
We have a mechanism. Ian's going to come out and, yeah, he's turned it on. So all you have to do is put that on that brown table and watch the screen where you can kind of, you can kind of move it around, and we will zoom in and make it bigger for you.
Oh, perfect. So this is just actually.
Is that working?
This is the review packet that I believe the other board would have gotten.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Sorry, this is.
If you'd like a handheld so you can point at it, we've got one.
Yeah, this is the review package that the other board, I believe, would have gotten to review the signage as proposed. You can see this is the new location we're moving into, and then the proposed signage at the bottom with the tagline of Bike Service and Gear.
On the same building, we have another tenant. And actually, the external signage has the same standard as we are proposing for our signage. So it would be like the same. I don't think you can see very clear here, but it's a two-line signage.
So part of what I'd love to hear from you is why the Bike Service Gear is important. So our codes don't allow sort of those taglines. So if you could talk to us about why that's important for your company, your brand, kind of give us your thinking around why we should allow you to do something that we've asked others not to. I'd also, I'm going to look up the address and try to see that other sign.
Okay. Yes, so we're moving this direction nationally actually for our brand. While we would love to be recognized just by our name, not everybody knows that Trek stands for Bike Service and Gear. People would sort of be left wondering what it is or might not know to come in for purchasing a bike, working on bikes, purchasing the bike gear that they need. So I think this is the importance really of having that tagline so people really understand what the business is, what we do.
And you currently have a shop in Wayne, right?
Yeah.
And you're moving to a larger space, I'm guessing?
Yeah, that's exactly it.
A prime, better location. What is your sign, what's your current sign look like?
Our current sign is a note sign, so it's actually just Trek. It doesn't have the tagline because this is a new standard and we have implemented in the last few years, and this store is older, you know? So we didn't update as we are relocating and making a lot of strategic decisions across North America. So this is the main reason.
Do others have questions?
I also brought some pictures like of other businesses that we saw with a two-line signage. I know that probably this was allowed by different reasons, you know? But just to give us an example, what we have seen around the store.
Would it be fair to say that Trek, please forgive me, I'm going to get this wrong. Trek, what is it? Bike's Gear?
Bike Service Gear.
Thank you. Would it be fair to say that Trek Bike Service Gear is your logo? With that font and those colors, it's not just Trek is your logo, it's Trek Bike Service Gear.
Actually, we have, we use both, like Trek is the name, it's the brand, right? And in external signage, as Trek doesn't bring the purpose of the business, we develop.
Let me interrupt you for a moment so as not to bury the lead. Our ordinance says that the sign contents has to include nothing but your name, your address, your logo, or your telephone number. So what I'm saying, is it fair to say that Trek Bike Service Gear is indeed your logo in that font? I'm trying to find a way to make sure that that conforms to our ordinance. So is that at least one of your logos?
Yeah, being rather new to retail, that's one of our logos.
Commissioner Larkin, I can tell you most of the signs in Pennsylvania are, do have Trek and then have the three words under it as a logo or will have Trek and then the three words, almost as a separate sign further away. But you do see them together on all the Trek stores.
They consistently appear.
Consistently, yeah.
Thank you.
Comment and just say, I have seen both. We are Trek fans, and people who don't necessarily know what Trek is would not know that it is, it offers service gear and, and what was the other one?
Bikes.
Well, obviously, bikes, right? So I think that the new standard, as new shops are opening, from what I've seen, that has been incorporated. So I understand that, to me, it sounds like that's the new standard logo. And because you're a new shop, you want to incorporate that new logo, that new logo in your signage.
That's exactly, okay.
Other than the sign on the front of the building, do you have other signage that was reviewed by the Design Review Board? And tell us a little bit more about those.
There is a space on the pylon, so we submitted the same proposal, and this was not approved. So yes, for both signage. I think it's.
So from my question, you can probably tell where I am going. However, the way you've got that laid out, because each slot there seems to be its own store. It seems like there's a Trek, there's a separate site called Bike Service Gear, and then there's a Taekwondo location. Would you consider incorporating them all into one? It will not affect my vote. I just, it would be a little clearer.
Yeah, sure.
So I look at restaurants in Garrett Hill that have gastro bar maybe, I don't know, restaurant and bar. I look at, you know, anything. And I'll take a national brand like Starbucks. It was Starbucks Coffee. They dropped the Starbucks. I get branding is important. If you, you in theory could open up a, you know, I don't know if you're an LLC, but you could open up a separate entity where that's your name, and then we would be stuck with it. So it's pretty benign. It's innocuous. It's not obnoxious. It fits your brand. It's not larger than your sign. There are a lot of these little things that it's, it's, yeah, it's, like I said, it's pretty benign. It's not offensive. I'm not offended by it. There's no blinking lights. Yeah, you're fine, with me at least. You have my vote.
Are you with the company?
No, I'm the landlord.
Peter? Is the, I mean.
Yeah, why don't we, I think I would treat him just like a, right.
Okay. Yeah, I would put them as part of the presentation.
Yeah, as long, as long as you're fine having him speak with you.
Okay.
Then yes.
Yeah, why don't you join the presentation? Thank you. And I'd like you to come to the mic, tell us your name, and speak to the mic.
Vince Antfilippo. I own the building, have for over 10 years, and the one next door. Just a quick detail, on the monument sign, there are only two tenants. So if, were you, were you going with adding Bike Service and Gear on the first placard? Is that where you were going just a minute ago? Jack?
I don't want to burn a ton of daylight on this. My thought is, it looks to me like there are four blanks on the monument.
There are.
And so it looks like each one would normally correspond to a store. It's a little confusing, but I.
The challenge is, if, the second placard is going to be blank if we move Bike Service and Gear up to the first placard. I think that's going to look worse than split up the way it is.
Yeah, people will find you. You're going to be the one that's not the Taekwondo store.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I think it would, I think for the community's benefit, the signage will look nicer if the words Bike Service and Gear are in the second placard instead of squished in the first and having a blank. I mean, the blank's going to be blank. I don't think that's, unless I put in, you know, this building owned by Vince, which is not what anybody wants to see. I'd rather not see a blank placard there on the second line of the monument sign. That was my only comment.
I appreciate that. I guess my question to that, stay up here because you might be able to respond.
There's only going to be two tenants in the building ever.
Two tenants ever.
There weren't two downstairs, Cody and Mattress Firm. I don't want two, I don't want two tenants down there for lots of reasons.
Yep.
They have the entire, it's consolidated first floor now. Taekwondo's upstairs. That's all there's ever going to be.
Okay.
If there's another tenant, then I'm going to have to make somebody move their sign, and that's my problem, not yours.
Great, thank you. I guess I'm now wondering whether the sign, if you use the two slots, is it still within the size limits of our ordinance? Kind of guesstimating. I think it looks like it would be fine, but I don't want to, I don't want to give you advice that you then get in trouble on that, so.
It's 75 square feet. I can't imagine. That's too big.
Is the monument included in the total?
Yeah, freestanding signs for each office building, shopping center, mixed-use development institution, et cetera. You get one freestanding ground monument per street frontage. The area in height is 75, oh, yeah, 75 square feet.
I don't know what, I don't think, I don't know what the square footage of the facade sign. It's probably on there if we want to flip to.
No, I think we know the, we know the. No, I think we know the, we know the property, so it couldn't possibly be that big.
There's no way it's 75 square feet.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
I would just get the spacing away from the two at the top. Just have one larger one.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
It's that gap in between Trek and Bike Service and Gear.
So are you saying perhaps move the lettering closer?
Just, if that...
Bring the words higher on the placard?
Yeah, if that gap was gone.
I agree with you, by the way, aesthetically. Well, you mean, you mean the space between the two? That's a structural thing, that's...
I know, I know.
If you can move, sorry, we're televised, so...
I don't think, that strip of metal between the two is part of the sign. I was thinking, were you saying move the word Bike Service and Gear up a little as opposed to centered vertically? Is that what you were saying? Okay. The strip is structural to the sign.
Structural, okay, that was what we needed. Okay.
Were there any neighbor complaints about this? No. No one's bothered you? No one's coming there with pitchforks, saying, okay?
Not that we've seen.
Before we vote, could I just make fun of you guys? You're wearing the shirts that say Trek, but they don't say Bike Service Gear.
Well, I know, we actually just came from, from the store, and...
This is Porto Alegre. Actually, we have in every store of Trek has one that says Trek, and there, it's the city, so Porto Alegre in Brazil, so, yes. So this is, we just have like the tagline here as the location of the store, yes.
However, if you do look up on the website, it just says Trek.
Yeah, this is just largely because we've been a manufacturing company for so long, really since the initiation of Trek, and only a retail store or retail company for the last couple of years. So this, this branding, as Mariana said, as we, you know, relocate or move into new spaces, is important for us to put this branding on there, that it's Bike Service and Gear, and that's what the entire retail experience is about versus just, you know, manufacturing bikes.
And did they talk to you at all about potentially putting that on the window instead of on the sign?
Other questions? Okay, and Peter, do you want me to call for public comment?
Yes, I think you probably should. You certainly can make, ask for the motion, get the second, and then call for it.
Thank you. Okay, so I will ask for a motion to approve the sign.
Some vote.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any public comment on this issue? I am not seeing any. I will call the vote. All in favor of approving the sign with the tagline, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, congratulations.
Thank you very much for having us here.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just, just to let you know, you'll get some correspondence either from my office or directly from the township saying, this was a vote, so you have something, we paper it, so you know you have it, okay?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, have a good night. That brings us to, was that the last? No, one more. Okay, item E is ordinance 2023-11. This is adoption, amending the code of the Township of Radnor. Chapter 270, Section 270-28, parking prohibited at all times, and Chapter 270, Section 270-31, special purpose parking zones. I'm going to start by asking for a motion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
And Chief, can you speak to this?
Yes, Board of Commissioners, this is the second reading of this. This is in reference to a no-parking zone on the north side of the Amtrak train bridge on North Eithan Avenue. The issue is if cars park there, they'll be impeding the flow of traffic, not only for heavy volume traffic, which that street sees during large capacity events, but very importantly, emergency service vehicles.
Thank you for that. Is there any comment from commissioners? And is there public comment? Not seeing any, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, that is approved. That moves us to reports of board liaisons. Anybody have anything they want to report from committees or commissions?
Yeah, I'll go. So Radnor Recreation, kind of want to give some shout-outs to the people that put on the Wayne Business Association for putting on the Christmas tree, as well as the Santa Claus, the parade, as well as the people in Garrett Hill for their lovely Christmas, I shouldn't say Christmas, the lovely tree lighting, it was just a tree lighting, there's no, just a tree, just a tree. So, yeah, and then there was some runs, some elves on the shelves. I know that the Willows had a fundraiser as well, which was, from the pictures, it looked wonderful. Coming up, I know that we have the Sweetheart Dance, and we have tennis, and a lot of great events, so please look on the Radnor website and subscribe to the Radnor Recreation Newsletter. Other than that, just want to say thank you to you guys once again, to Tammy, and to all the people in the Recreation Department, as well as those that serve on the board. Thank you for allowing me to participate, for allowing me to put my input in, and like I said, I wish you all the best. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Farhi. Any other reports? Okay, I will move to new business. Is there any new business? Is there any old business? Okay, is there any public participation? Is there any comment from the public?
Oh, do we have another meeting this month, or is it already canceled?
It has not already been canceled, I was trying to text and talk at the same time.
Might there be some new business that we could entertain?
Could we entertain some new business? There is a, currently, there is a meeting scheduled on December 18th, Monday night. Traditionally, if we don't have a lot of pressing business in front of the township, we take the opportunity to give staff, commissioners, and the public a night off. I just want to check with Bill White to see if there is an appetite for canceling the last meeting.
Yeah, from an agenda standpoint, the administration is good with not proceeding with the meeting. Speaking with the solicitor at the same time that you were texting and talking, we were having the same conversation. The direction there is if the board wishes to cancel that meeting, have a discussion and vote on it tonight, and it's, it'll, we'll post it accordingly based on that vote.
Okay. Does any commissioner oppose to cancellation of the December 18th meeting? Does anybody have anything to say about canceling the December 18th meeting?
It's my anniversary, I will not be here.
I am going to make a motion to cancel the December 18th meeting. And a second, does the public have any response to us canceling a meeting? Our regulars, I'm getting nods, okay.
There's an Eagles game that night, too.
That's right, that's right, lots of reasons, so...
I don't know if anybody, hold on, sorry. I don't know if anybody wants to watch the Eagles. Last night's performance.
Okay, then I'll take the vote, approve, approving the cancellation of the December 18th meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now I will ask for a vote to adjourn, a motion to adjourn, and a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. This might have been a record, 7:35.